I call a meeting to order. New business, discussion action on site plan review application for Ryan Nickerson and Katrina Nickerson. Two sixty Waterville Road, map twenty-four lot twenty-six. That's our package right there.
You have the application in your packet. They have an eight year tonight Steve Nickerson and Steve I don't know if you just want to give a quick brief overview of what we're proposing, location on there or whatnot. Absolutely. Take questions.
Sure. So we will be the entrance, those entrance will be off the Bigelow Hill Road, not up one thirty-nine. Approximately almost adjacent to three D equipment. Ryan and his wife want to build a forty by one hundred structure. Forty by sixty of it will be our shop in the rear main gate traps. For fun always, you know, that's the the front forty by forty sixteen hundred square feet will be a small retail. He wants to sell bill barrels, shovels, rakes, anything that we use in our business, he wants to sell. Above that, there'll be another sixteen hundred square feet of three offices and one rescue. It's a sixteen foot posted high building, an eight pitch roof. Metal screw down, fingering metal screw down, you know, on siding. One live door in the rear for equipment and then entrance to the front. For me too.
What are your questions?
I don't know if this is the right time, well, maybe, I don't know if it's right times because looking at the whole packet. Just a couple of, a couple of things, so that because the copy of the deed was in the packet. So are we comfortable that every, all of the, and I don't even know if we just wanted to do this, but the restrictions that are in the deed, are you going to be okay with those? Because it says, you know, construction shall be completed for two years of anything that's there. It says, yeah, selling used automobiles or types of recreational vehicles, so you're not selling. And then I think on the diagram, it didn't, I, I did, it didn't scale, it says fifty feet from the, from Bigelow Hill. That building will be set back fifty feet away. Okay. It didn't, it didn't specifically say it. I didn't scale it, did I? Scale it out.
Probably might, you know, like those line the trees area. It's gonna obviously be a mind.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just, it didn't say it on the drawing. And and again, not that it had to, but even on the drawing. I know, I, I know, I was real happy when I did mine on a slab, the elevation. Yeah, I'm sure he'll bring that right up, go to the road. I do know of another business that wish they had.
Yeah, he is, he's been there approximately, I think, three years now, four years. And obviously you want the spring run off the water and all that stuff and get in the high water table, that it's all built up. You're going to end up in that ditch.
But I think so, I just remember someone else, I don't, I know another one that wish they put this slab a little bit higher. That was the only question I had, thank you.
Thank you.
We have that draft document in front of you. What the findings of fact or what, I'm going to add into that about what quite some deep restriction. Any other questions about the content of the application before we begin deep review criteria on the site. We need a moment from the board to convene the application.
Let me motion that, that we find that the application from Ryan and Katrina is complete.
Margaret on?
No, she called earlier, said she would be on the potential, so there's nobody online right now.
We don't, well.
You have a call, you don't need to do roll call, you can show hands.
Okay. I second it. All in favor?
The next step is going to be to determine whether or not a, a public hearing beyond this meeting is necessary.
Looks like we have members to open it up for a public comment.
Yes, but you want to determine public here, it's that to be first.
I can make, I'll make a motion that we do not have a public hearing on the side of.
Oh, I'll second it, yeah.
So just for time for discussion, I guess, so now, you know, I think we have a vote chamber possibly, so that, so we are to hear, make this for lack of a time of public comment.
Public comment period, not public here.
Right.
So here will be a different date. We vote on this, and then if you determine that that's not necessary, then the chair can put up a public comment. And we can take questions on the application from them if that if that whatever.
Sure. So the movement is to not have a, not have a public hearing right now.
To not schedule.
To not schedule a public hearing.
Correct.
I second it. All in favor?
Yeah.
There you go.
So, yeah, before we begin the formal review process, I think now would be the appropriate time if the chair wishes to open it up to the public for questions, comments.
Yeah. Question to comment?
I said there was a misunderstanding on our part where the actual location of the place was going to be. Being hard, it was going to be like a road over and where we're saying, but we're all good now.
Wow, that was way too easy. Anybody else?
So if the board wishes to proceed, you're going to look at the draft document, the finding or back. Conclusions and those are considered. Page two. The conclusions, number one, this is a review criteria.
That you couldn't hit.
Then I'm sorry.
Okay.
The conclusion section is second ten of the site plan review ordinance. And you can work through that item by item, or you can work through it in bulk. I know the last time you went through this process, it's been discussed. Findings of fact was on the table when you came in, finished drafting and such. The last application that we gave, we did some of them four, five at a time, and then some we did both at a time and some of them we took all go. So it's, it's, you are the single list to, I'd like to move through the review criteria. Page two under conclusions is where that checklist is going to start.
So I think similar, similar to the, the last one of these that we did, we read them aloud and then we just kept going unless there was a time that we felt the need to stop and ask questions. So suggest maybe we can do that again.
Okay. The application is complete and escrow fees have been paid. The proposal conforms to all the applicable provisions of this ordinance. The proposed activity will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that an unsound or unhealthy condition results as per the DEP's erosion and sediment control manual enforced at the time of the ordinance approval. The proposed activity will not have an adverse impact on wetlands. The proposed activity will not have an adverse impact upon any water bodies such as a lake, pond, river, or stream. The proposed activity will provide for adequate stormwater management. The proposed activity will provide for adequate sewage disposal. The proposed activity will not adversely impact any floodplain areas and will conform to the applicable requirements of the town of Norwalk floodplain management. The proposed activity will not result in air or water pollution. The proposed activity has sufficient water available for the current foreseeable needs of the development. The proposed activity will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. The proposed activity will dispose of all solid waste in compliance with all local regulations. And then the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to town facilities will not exceed their capacity.
The proposed activity. Has there been a more thing done for that?
They have a second part to, yes, yep. But the waste that that was being talked about was solid waste. Back to number thirteen, the proposed activity will not have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses or other properties which might be affected by waste, noise, glare, fumes, smoke, dust, odors, or their effects. The proposed activity will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing or proposed highways or roads. Sorry for the interruption, it's six eleven, Charlotte Curtis has joined the meeting. Any vote requires a roll call.
I made a motion.
Keep reading if you don't want to.
No, I made a motion we accept from one fourteen.
Second.
Charlotte.
Cameras off and she's muted. So not anticipating, you can, you need to vote by roll call and she'll be in the center when she turns in.
Mike?
Yes. Yes.
John, yes.
Thirty zero one. She's gone, no one need to roll call.
What is we continuing?
The proposed activity to the maximum extent possible will not have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife or the town of Norwalk, or rare or irreplaceable natural areas or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline. The proposed activity conforms to all applicable requirements of the town shore land zoning ordinance and all other local ordinances. The proposed activity will not increase a great ponds phosphorus concentration is developing is within the watershed of a great pond. The town has the capacity to provide fire and rescue services to the proposed development.
Motion we accept fifteen to eighteen. All in favor?
Okay. So that is the brunt of the approval, the next will be your conditions of approval, if the board wishes to place those. Three customary approval are the de minimis rule, if there are any de minimis changes, anything substantive beyond what's presented here today, it will need to come back. So if you're going to step outside the forty by a hundred structure by anything substantial, or be relocated on the property in a substantial way, that needs to come back to the planning board. The second one is that DEP and any or all other agency permits, if required, would be obtainable when this permit becomes valid. And the last one was a permit becomes null and void unless substantial start construction determined by the code officer within one year. A member previous to the, before the meeting mentioned that we do need to get together with the code enforcement officer, agent, or applicant with the code officer to determine a measurement of construction substantial start. So look at the structure and you can walk the date to set that up and he needs to issue that in writing before this permit become valid. Okay. Those are the three different conditions of approval that define what applies for cycling review application. Does the board wish to apply any additional conditions of approval?
I'd like to, yes, I'd like to, Charlotte, we'll just, just, uh, just a couple of, along that, along that line. So again, if you look at the definition on the again, in the, in the site review ordinance, the definition of substantial starts is this should be based on measuring actual construction. Such measurement would be determined by the code enforcement officer and applicant prior to permit issuance. So so for me, I think that one of the things, because as a planning board, we are the one that are granting the permit. Not code enforcement, although code enforcement is, we're all harder, we're all together. So this, this substantial start should be, I think, in a document that is very measurable. And again, and whatever, and it is whatever, whatever the applicant and the code enforcement they come up with. Substantial start to them might be two shovelfuls of dirt, great, whatever, or, you know, eighty percent of the hundred thousand dollar estimated cost. Again, whatever they determine, it doesn't matter. But my thing, my, because my thing is this, we need a, to me, we should follow this process and this document because we are the we are the, the ones that are actually doing the permit. I would like, just like to have that back to us, but not hold up the permit. We, the permit is good unless we find an issue with the document of substantial start. For another, you know, in other words, if they say, well, two shovelfuls of dirty air, we might have a problem with that. But I mean, um, but if it's, yeah.
Basically, the code enforcement officer would make a determination of what a start is, and then we make the final approval.
Well, it's, it's not just the code enforcement, it's with the, it's with the, the applicant too. But they, they, they're supposed to come together and say, hey, this is what substantial start on this particular project means to us. And again, where we're the ones that are actually granting the permit, I just think we probably should be nice to know what it is. That's, that's just my thing.
And that's within a year of the, for them to start it. And it wouldn't start till what, spring?
They were going to start this week again. But whether, I mean, we have to get with town, we're going to do the color in the, the ditch. We have to clear some trees, you have to make an entrance in the pocket line, all that stuff. We, there'll be quite a bit going on as soon as we get going.
And that, in, in this particular case, the deed restriction is again, I haven't done it too. So, you know.
Yeah. I see where they're going to start right off. Is it really necessary? Jackie?
I would think so. If you opened a can of worms that you would get a subdivision, you might have that all fallen. A year. I mean, I know that's a little bit different, but sometimes it's forty years older. Than I fulfill without.
This isn't, like I said, this isn't about the time, this is just about the document that says substantial start. We're talking about the, the document that, that the code enforcement and the applicant get together and create. That's what, that's what we're talking about.
Some too can work it out what a substantial start is.
Yeah.
I mean, rather than.
The, the, again, the question for me is, do we, should we, or do you want, do we as a board want to see? Do we care?
I, I make a motion that we have the right to see that document, but the document won't hold up, then start cutting trees.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. It's out there.
So at the next meeting, the document is all back.
Yes. So at the next meeting, we should see the document and I mean, they'll be all good to go.
Yeah. But it then begs the question, what if you're not content with what a substantial start construction is within that document? Are you validating the applicant's permit?
Would, would we? No, because that would just go back to the code enforcement officer and them and hash it out. I mean, what, what, what we consider a substantial start. I mean, they get an excavator on the site and dig it, oh, to me, they're, they're, it's going forward. They start cutting trees and get a call within, I mean, that's.
So, so, but so go back to Mike, the example, if, and again, this is just, we're just if the code enforcement and the, and the applicant said, if we, if we bring in two shovelfuls of dirt and put it on there, that's considered a significant start. You're going to be okay with that?
I mean, a year to do it.
They have a year to go.
I would consider it substantial start, I mean, but I, I think, I mean, because they wouldn't be going to fall there since they fall the applications fee if they weren't fully impending. Okay. And, and the code enforcement officer is going to make the decision whether it's, they're actually serious or not.
If I could, I guess my only thing there would be, it's an added restriction when you have somebody that's professional filling the job of code enforcement officer. And if you're going to do that, then are you going to review my signature on the highway performance recommendation for a road inventory permit for the coven installation? Do you need to have a site visit in order to make sure that that can be acceptable, or it does not affect things from here to there? If we're going to start looking at professional individuals, employees judgment and want to review all of that, then it just, I think we're going to be six months before we can issue a permit that's going to be there.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, but we, we're, I'm, my my concern is that we, we have the board are the ones that are issuing the permit. So that the townspeople, when, when this gets issued, when this gets done, the, the people of Norwalk, it can say the planning board, you've granted this permit. Wasn't the code enforcement officer. And again, no, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sunk in anywhere. I'm just want to make sure that, as I said earlier, prior to meeting, we have a process and I just want to make sure we follow the process. So processes that the code enforcement and the applicant, prior to issuing the permit, get together to determine, you know, the measurement of what substantial start is. Once we have that, I'm happy, happy to be.
But I fully don't want, if they, they want to start cutting trees tomorrow, I, I, I'm all for it. That type of thing. But put it in that we can do whatever to the applicant that is not reasonable, then, you know, the you know, what they did, them and the code enforcement officer decide, I mean, if it's not, you know, two shovelful or one shovelful or whatever.
No, we, we don't have anything to do with, we're letting it, yeah, we're, we're acquiescing to our, to our higher professional. And, and that's fine.
Actual, go by the bar, we've got to see what what the code enforcement officer and the people are actually going to agree to on a substantial start.
Yeah, what you just said, we're not, we can see it, but we're not going to, we're not going to do anything about it. Which is okay, because that's not, I don't, not trying to, I'm not, I don't want any power in that, I just want to follow, I just want to follow the process, that's all. That's all I want to do. So which, which again, if they follow the process, we'll see it next month when they, you know, when you, when you.
What's your take on it, Richard?
I agree, as my opinion. We pay people good money and try to attract talented individuals and allow them to complete a job. It's not different than me as road commissioner, employee A as a code enforcement officer or a town clerk. We hire people to do a job and make the trust that they're going to do it. I think that if it was the intent of the ordinance to have a planning board review it, it would be.
Okay.
May I, may I speak?
You come. Yes.
Thank you. Um. In all of our site plan reviews, it's been a percentage that has to be complete. Is, is the permit only good for a year?
That's correct.
So it, I I think it was fifty percent complete within that year.
But that's not in the ordinance.
Huh?
That's not in the ordinance.
Well, I think that's what we've always used, so.
So I think we're only discussing any, any additional conditions, so I don't have any, I don't have any additional conditions of approval.
Anybody else? So those three conditions that I read in previous or explained earlier is going to be included in that if there's a motion, a second, a favorable vote.
So I moved to that we accept the three conditions of approval and it's written on the draft. All right.
I'll second it.
Need further discussion on the conditions to be applied. The roll call vote is required.
Mike?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Charlotte?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Who seconded that?
John?
Okay, thank you.
And the last item, I believe, to wrap up this application before you would be to authorize the chair on behalf of the board to sign the findings of facts, conclusions, and those of just.
You need a motion. Yeah, I move that we, we allow this, that happens. I'll second it.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike, doing it in the morning, trying to.
Call before you come. You know, I can stay late.
No, I won't be around like nine, ten o'clock.
Perfect. Yeah.
Moving on.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you investing in Norwalk, thank you so much.
Send your tax online.
Yes. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Discussion action on December eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. I make the motion that we expect December's. I mean, because we approved it, we did everything, it's on, see you can deliver.
Yes, you're just reviewing the minutes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um.
There's a motion, what's up with minutes? There, thank you.
Yeah.
You have a second, okay. John with the motion, Chuck with the second on the minutes, any further discussion?
Mike?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any other business?
Yes. So, um, again, just as I was reviewing the, the site plan ordinance. So again, I think, and this isn't the the, the, the term substantial start, obviously, is one of those things where it's such a gray area. And personally, I think, not even a good person, so I think for the town, it, it could get us, again, a little bit into where it's so subjective. You know, what is substantial, what is it? So I was, I was thinking about, should we do something to amend the definition of substantial start? And that, as I was emailing, you know, you folks, or, you know, that way, as I wanted to bring it up, and I wanted to see some of these, the documents, so what we found though, um I just want to make sure I word this right. So Richard, I understand when you said earlier about we hire professionals, we pay them good money. So obviously, though, we have not been following this ordinance.
Completely, I mean, it's, it's a substantial ordinance. And up until two years ago, when waste management came in, we weren't issuing findings, facts, and things like that. This is an elected board. You get me as a courtesy, not as an entitlement. I'm here on my own time tonight. And so a lot of the stuff that just kind of happened is, it's the way it's always been is you walk in here, not that it's right. And, but if something comes out, then it's incredible.
Right, and I'm not, so, I'm not, so again, I don't want, just, I'm not being critical of that. So, and I, and I'm with you, I, I fully support, I, the, the concept and, and I don't want to circumvent anybody again that's hired to do a job, okay, to do their job. So again, so, but we have found, so now that we have found, we, we have not been doing this. So, um so now the question is, what, now what do we, now what do we do? Okay, so so do we need to do like a root cause of, so why haven't we followed it? And then is the, is it, or, and then we've, and then we discovered, is it because the ordinance isn't clear enough? Or, you know. Or, you know, again, something, we, we, you know, we gotta, we gotta do something. And then, so, and then another thing I gotta ask is, since we haven't been following it, do we need to consult, um, legal counsel, is that, what should we do? Because we haven't been following something, are we at risk of anything?
So, no, I mean, an administrative approval, administrative communication, whether it's a permit or otherwise, is gonna withstand, um, anything in your appeal windows article clause on just about every last application. Uh. It's one of those things, I think you correct one forward. And candidly, when it comes to our planning board, we should have that kind of an estimate figured out when it's being heard as to what that substantial completion is. Okay, well, up until eight weeks ago, we had a code officer that was working maybe four hours a week. So.
But we, yeah, you just, I'm sorry, I got confused a little bit, when you just said some, it should come before the planning board, but our, our thing says it doesn't.
It doesn't, and it doesn't happen. Right, what I'm saying is that I think that a part of the application process, while you're hearing the application, a simple question could be, maybe discuss with the code enforcement officer, what's gonna be considered substantial completion? So it's not, I don't think it would be appropriate that it got held up, but I think it might be a reason why it's gonna come here. If somebody wasn't happy with that answer. But now that we're made aware of this, and it's a, usually, usually people don't use the one year window for construction. Um. And we've had a couple instances lately where they have and never apply, but usually you don't get that, but I think that's a reasonable question to say, okay, as we look at this, the groundwork for the project today, we're not gonna play Monday morning or kind of in between. The project for today, we're gonna consider substantial completion, is all the earthwork in this land. And that's substantial.
Well, you.
You're intended for that, but.
Yeah, because I mean, that's one of the things, so when you, and then, so when you talk about definitions, you know, if you think about the, you know, if you look at Webster's under substantial, so substantial says is significant or great or considerable in quantity. Largely, but not wholly. So, it, it's, so, so this is just for thought, of the things and of the, of the two projects that were granted significant, do you, do you think they met that different definition? Can you sleep at night going, yeah, they did, they met that definition?
Hey, honestly, the ability to quantify and what's visible, what's not, when you talk about earthwork, you know, you can spend this much money on earthwork as you want, if something was actually gonna be put on top.
Yeah.
You talk about, you know, just something off, and then you get a lot, or two acres, and then build parking lot, I think it's different on a case by case.
I, I do, and I think that's why it's like that, I think that's why the two, I, I think it's, it's very smart that they, that they say applicant and code enforcement, you get together, you, you guys determine what you wanna do. Yeah.
Um, and that start is different for every project. So, I mean, you can't say, they gotta have the, the foundation in, some places not putting foundations.
Right, so, yeah, nothing is specific, that you, if you notice on the definition, there's no, there's not a specific item, it's just, if you look at it, it's, it's just all on those words, it's, it's descriptive.
For a building for sale, I mean, they could put up like, uh, one of those tents, like Bruce did, put up orders cement, like, those massive, I mean, hundred feet long and, you know, big enough for loaders and.
Right, and it has permanent placement, they should have come with a plan.
But it's not permanent placement. There's no foundation.
Doesn't make any difference.
I mean, it's certainly grounded, foundation for both.
Anyway, so, getting back to, getting back to the other business, so substantial start, so, and then, again, so maybe I'm, help me, I, maybe I'm, I'm learning to a little bit on the, on on the job here, because it does say, I'm, I'm sorry, man.
Could this be put under the definitions? Would it be that simple? Substantial start means this percentage within a year?
Um.
Or would we have, have to add in a whole other section to the ordinance?
Well, well, my, my thing, Charlotte, was, because when I looked at where it pertained to, so, and it really pertains to permit expiration. And then if you read that, it says permits are valid for twelve months from the date, then it says of the review authorities approval. So again, and then, now, I just wanna make sure, uh, we are, we are a review authority. So that's, so that's to me, and to us, I'm kind of a logic.
When I get the signature on that paper, that's final approval.
Right, so where we are, so that's all, so that's all when I'm seeing substantial start, so my thing was, so my headspace was on permits that code enforcement does, all residential stuff, great, he does his own substantial start. But on per, permits that we do as a planning board, maybe we ought to have input on what's, what's substantial start. And again, just going by guidelines of, this is, again, very great, the planning board and the applicant get together and we determine what it is. That, that's all that I was wanting to propose about, is, because if we're mentioned here under, under the expiration of, you know, from the review authorities approval, if we're approving a permit here, shouldn't we have a say in what substantial start is over here? That's, that's all, that's my, that's my question to the board. And if the majority of the board says no, then, uh, that's fine and nitty, but, but that's my question.
Um, but in your opinion of a substantial start, my opinion is substantial start, and Chuckie's could be all different.
It is, right, it is all different, but that's the good thing about the, but at least as a board, we all get, we all get to get, to do it all as one, just like we did the ordinance, you know? We all, we all had to give and take and do something, that, that's the thing, we can speak as one. But anyway, that's, that's my, I, I.
Probably agenda for a future meeting, but something to think about, I think everybody's kinda thinking about, where would you fall in on that? Because then the question falls for me, one of the biggest things is, you're a waste manager, looking at the transfer station that was just permitted. What qualify do to determine substantial start to construction on that? I'm not qualified necessarily, you know, I'm gonna look at the earth movement or this and that, or the number of canopies that are built over where the containers are gonna be at. I don't know, you know, it's difficult to nail that down.
But you can see, but you can see the same thing as a, a plaintiff, is it just because, you know, just because someone's on a plaintiff, do they have construction experience? Oh, that's, yeah, 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 so it's not, I don't think it, I don't think it's that, because I think it's, it's a board, so we, together, we as a team, we speak, because, to me, that's how I can envision this, we can determine as a team, because we all, we all have a diverse background, we all have something different to bring the tape to the table. Again, my, my, just to re, rewrite the point, is if we're being asked, or we're talked about here under the, the expiration of a permit, we're granted. And I, I just think that we ought to have a say in the what's, what's substantial start. That's all. And we can definitely, let's think about, we have another meeting.
Other things to consider, site visits, that means you're gonna have to conduct a site visit before, you have to get a form on site to do that. And then in a year's time, you're going back and gonna conduct another site visit to a certain place. Or you're gonna trust the code enforcement officer to determine that, but you don't trust them to set the restriction. So. Your office is nice.
Yeah. We did, it'll be four months before somebody's.
Um, I think the code enforcement officer is more qualified to make that decision. I mean, is that what he does?
And I'll just, I have to bring that up.
The regular meeting agenda.
Again, I'm just bringing it up, so, let the board.
We'll put that on the old business next time. And they said next regular meeting intentionally, I have a request to start the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, red barn rows on the river. Uh, that was permitted not long ago.
Yeah.
Under this board.
Yep, yep.
Uh, there is one lot on there where a septic is already been put in, and they wanna build in front of it, and you remember, there's a seventy-five foot setback for construction on the road.
Yes.
They are looking to modify that. They're looking to have that one lot setback adjusted. They are, they are on site, they're trying to keep the ground warm, they're doing everything else. Uh, the goal was for them to have a subdivision plan in eleven days ago, so they could be heard tonight, and that did not come until today. So they didn't know if you would consider giving the cost of them being mobilized on the site leading two weeks from tonight. It does require a whole new subdivision process, because it's a change in a condition. That setback was a voluntary condition uh, from the previous applicant, they had unanimous agreement from the owners, uh, but they were asking for a special meeting.
Um, Richard?
Yep.
Did this come from people who bought the lot? Or the original?
This came from the people who bought a majority of the lots that are there, as well as the large piece out back that was excluded from the subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the reason why we did that setback was because the subdivision people didn't want the trees that went along the road.
Yes.
So I don't want to get really into the weeds of it, that's something to be heard when the applicant has been noticed, and the others have been noticed to be here. The question before the board is whether or not you would schedule a special meeting.
We can talk to him, as far as I'm concerned.
But are you willing to schedule a special meeting on, say, the twenty-sixth of January, being two weeks from tonight?
As long as it's not snowing. Yes.
I'm, I'm over it.
I would be available.
Yeah.
January twenty-sixth, would you be willing to be? Yeah, okay, if we're gonna have a motion to schedule a special meeting for January twenty-sixth at six P M. Are you available for that?
I can, sure, absolutely.
I made a motion that we have a special meeting on January twenty-sixth.
A second.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuckie?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
John, yes.
Yeah. Get those out too, just as soon as. The other item that I have for the business is, I'm on the plan, and Charlie, you don't have it, I'll get it to you, and I'll do the same for Margaret. The plan, but the budget committee, uh, did their budgeting last week. Uh, in a part of that, one of the things is that the code office, uh, the hours have increased. And the discussion they had was, should we be increasing fees to support that? Arguments in every direction. Uh, you'll, you've done the cover letter there about the budget itself, then I tried to get the supporting material just through digging as to the change in twenty seventeen, so our fee schedule was implemented when the site calendar review ordinance was passed in twenty fifteen. That's when those prior to six, seven, seventeen fees were put into place. On, we, uh, June seventh of seventeen, at the recommendation of the planning board, you then saw the regrouping fees, um, on your resident, where they took off the per square foot, and the same with the sensitive, and, and convert to one of twenty-five hundred. Um. And you can see what we drove for revenue historically since a site review was in action. And then on the last page, I tried to do a survey around, uh, and I didn't get everybody to respond, and I've got some holes, because boss I talked to didn't know everything about. Uh, so I'm working on building that up, where they get a system, costs, through thinking about what you would or wouldn't be willing to do, uh, and then make a recommendation, whether it's for no change or change, that it could send to the select board in, you know, of the laws.
Thank you, I was listening, so, um, so what I'm finding, I thought I was, what do, what do you need from us on this?
So nothing tonight.
Okay.
There's not everybody's seen it, and it's a hawk thing, the budget committee, the one, the planning board, you should consider increasing fees.
Okay, right. Yeah, in order, in, in effort to help fund the code enforcement, catch up, yeah.
Is it different code enforcement or just what?
It's the same, it's twenty hours in, it's fire pit and twenty hours of coal. And kind of intermingled, if you come in and you need something, don't just say, hey, go, that's the shit, call me. Nice question. Um. Yeah, then the other thing candidly for us is, if you go out and build a garage, ten dollar permit, sounds great, user friendly, right? But you build a garage and don't get a permit, it's twenty bucks. Same with a house, you could go build a five million dollar house, without a permit, and it's fifty bucks. So it makes it really difficult. The goal's always the clients, and you don't want to stick people just to invest in our community, but I think there's a happy medium.
Yeah, to, you. I've been building up a town, if he's.
Right, yeah.
I think there's room there.
So we'll put this, at least for the production, on the next way, we'll be in town as well.
We better make a decision on what town needs.
No, fees are adjusted by the select board.
Okay.
Yep. Two members of the board on any other business?
No.
Seeing none?
We'll call, we need to close.
Chair adjourns the meeting at six forty-five. Very good, thank you. Carol, I'll catch up with you in the morning, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, goodnight.